And.
You sure it's okay on there? Mark's on.
Mark is on?
Mm-hmm.
We're very good.
We're going to go.
Oh, what were you talking?
I worked this. I just wanted to get a little. Julie, great. Nobody went to jail.
Are we all set?
No. Okay. I'll call the meeting to order at seven oh one. Reviewing and accepting the minutes from October twenty fourth. I had a small. Item and you had a small item. They've been incorporated. So I moved that we accept the minutes as amended for October twenty fourth.
Okay.
Both. You've got the floor.
As you know, the community center, I've been working on the community center to strengthen. The building's longevity by taking care of some of the issues that have come up, which one of which is. Water that is draining into the basement through the foundation, causing a lot of erosion. And in my opinion, will eventually. Skew the foundation to the point that, you know, it's going to be a huge problem for the maintenance. So my long term plan for the community center is to repair the foundation. The front of the foundation is really bad right now. And the side of the foundation underneath the handicap platform is a lot of erosion and the water just flows in there like a river. So. Eventually, I would like to put a full concrete floor in, which will help stabilize the foundation. And help prevent water from coming in. I invited the Ellis brothers here tonight because I have had several appointments with people coming in to tell me how I could fix this. And a lot of the. These solutions were package deals and these types of things that really wouldn't solve the problem. Until I had a recommendation from Heather to call the main school's masonry and that's how I met the Ellis brothers. And they came down and they were terrific in explaining how they could fix the issues for us. And at considerably less cost. So. We also in Department of Environmental Protection, since the building is in a protected zone.
Shoreland.
Shoreland zone and. The the environmental engineer said because the building had been there for a long, long time, they would bend the rules a little bit. To let us do what we needed to do. So. I'm at the point also where I just found out that the planning board needs to get involved because the town's own land ordinance.
It's hundred and fifty feet.
It's a hundred and fifty feet as opposed to.
Entirely in it. The EEP part of it's only twenty five feet. So the back end of the building is like five feet into that twenty five feet. The building's fifty four, fifty five feet long. So. It seems to me that we, it all depends on Bill. If he thinks we need to come before the planning board. I don't think it's a big deal. I mean, the building exists, needs to be fixed. The tricky part is if more than ten yards of any type of filled gravel stone is moved. Then you have to go to the planning board. If it's less than ten yards, then they don't have to. But I'm thinking it's maybe more than ten yards.
Yeah, those are the things that I don't know about. So but since the building has been there since the late eighteen hundreds, there might be some kind of grandfather type clause though. But I don't know. It all depends on on Bill, what he thinks and we'll certainly go by what he thinks. So I'm thinking we have to go before the planning board and also file a. A permit, permit by rule to the DEP, which is two hundred and sixty six dollars. And I'm not sure if I do that as the chair of the community center or whether the contractors do it. I'm not sure on that. Maybe Bill knows since he was, he used to work at DEP. So. I don't know if you've had a chance to look over. The. The proposal, maybe you have, and we decided as the board decided to go with the. More expensive proposal because we felt that, you know, it was, it wasn't that much more money. And for long term longevity and stability of the foundation, it was definitely worth it. So I don't know what I'm asking you for.
Pay for the permit, for the DEP permit.
Well, the permit I need to do first, but you can do it online and you can do it by credit card. And that I would have to go to Carrie for. I've actually printed, I have it, the permit filled out in my name. And I don't know if that's proper or whether it should be in the select board's name. But since I'm on the, you know, the, on the board of trustees' chair, I figure it's my responsibility. Since I've been doing all the legwork for it. And I don't mind doing that. But I can print out or bring it to Carrie and maybe she can do that for me. And we have two years from the approval of the permit to get the work done, which I think we can do in that amount of time. If we don't hear from them in fourteen days, we can just go ahead and do it. But if they have objections, then, you know, we'll have to wait and see what they, what they think.
Sorry to ask this, but how much are we talking about money total?
Two sixty six.
No, for the.
Oh, for the repair.
I wouldn't even ask.
I think all told it was about, it was about.
Can they tell us a little about that?
Yes, it can. I'm going to ask them to get up and speak. I think all told it was something like fifteen thousand.
Yeah, that's the ballpark.
Ballpark, you know, a little bit more or something like that. I don't know if increase in materials may be, may be an issue. But I, you know, we have the money that the community center has raised. It will come from our own coffers, not the town's. Okay, that's what you're concerned about.
No, no, I just, for interest, I'm an excavation.
Sure, I can pass it around.
What they're gonna do, what that, you know, you invited them down.
Yes, yes. There are some things, there are some things that they can do that we don't need permit for, which is some inside pointing work. So maybe Brandon or William can talk about that.
So the foundation wall underneath the handicap, handicap ramp going into the building will get pointed from the inside. That will certainly help as a kind of a last effort to keep any water out of the basement area. On top of that work, we're going to do some minor excavating around. Beneath the ramp, put in a thick rubber membrane slash barrier to kind of drape below grade. Six feet away from the foundation so that no water can penetrate into the foundation. We're going to do all the proper draining and everything. We're going to layer with sand and crushed stones to make sure that the filtration is appropriate in that area for the bulk water coming off the roof. And sloping down from the street so that that water can't get into the foundation. And that should. Almost completely solve the water issue from that side of the building. And then the front side of the building, parallel of the street, we, when we inspected, it appeared that the granite slabs that the building is sitting on have shifted. In the past to try to kind of repair that, which involved cutting into the granite slab. Is dig a trench in front of the building along the foundation wall to expose the foundation. And our plan is to do some minor jacking of the building to get the weight off of the foundation wall. So that we can put in proper forms on either side of the stone foundation wall and pour that with concrete. We would selectively remove stone from the foundation wall so that the concrete that we pour is able to flow through the wall. And we would reinforce it with rebar to make sure that the footing on either side of the stone foundation wall is, is, is bound together. And then we would. And realign the granite slabs to line up with the sill plate under the building. So that when we set that building down, it's got even contact and adequate support from the granite and the footing that we pour. So that would be our attempt. And then whatever other ditching we need to do to divert water from that part of the building. As permitted by DEP and that sort of thing. So. That's just a quick synopsis of kind of the process of the work that we'll do. Not major excavation. I'd say the biggest thing would be exposing that front foundation wall that runs along the road. But we'd only need to go down three or four feet because it's not very deep before you're into that basement space. So.
Another thing that I found out a little bit late in the process is that. The DEP requires that the contractor be DEP certified. And I inquired about that. Actually Greg spoke to Cam about that. And he said that it can be done online and it's not a huge deal. It's probably talking about making sure that there's no silt that goes into the. Into the river or into the pond. So and I don't know the cost. I don't know, you know, anything about it. But that's something that I think would be required.
Yep.
And I don't.
It's a day course.
It's a day.
Like an eight hour.
You got, you can watch a video.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a big thing. I've got to go through it.
Okay, sure.
Is it expensive?
Yeah, it makes sense, right? You want to make sure that's certified, the EEP certified. But it's just a day.
Is it expensive there?
No, no, I think a hundred bucks, sixty bucks, a hundred bucks, something like that.
Would we each have to do it or can we do it together?
This one, this one has to do it.
Okay, all right.
They do allow you to get a video and this, this, this is the matter. A lot of it repetitive. They go the same thing all day long.
Okay.
So I've been through it a couple of times. Now the permit, you might want to go through the town, the town building, the permit by rule. And how that usually works, anytime we ever did it, they say wait fourteen days. You usually never hear anything. It becomes, if someone complains down the road, that's when they'll step in. But I've never known what happened.
I, I don't see an issue.
I don't see.
I, I really don't. I'm just concerned that this gets done ASAP. And with the, with the winter coming, I'm concerned that we might have to wait till spring for some of the excavation. But I think, you know, we can do some of the inside work now, hopefully, and then we can get certified over the winter and then.
Sure.
Soon as spring breaks.
Yeah.
We can get that done.
You can, according to the, to the permit by rule, you can do three quarters, no, half of the inside of the thing without a permit from them.
Oh, half of the foundation?
You're gonna probably need to commit from Bill.
Okay, so I should go see him?
Yeah, we'll see him tomorrow.
Okay.
And then, I heard you guys want to talk to him too, but.
Sure.
He's a pretty reasonable guy.
Yeah, is he the one who was in that email?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you get to speak with him?
I didn't speak with him. It was just email correspondence. But he sounded, he was very helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other thing is having your information given to Carrie, you know, liability.
Yep, we've got that ready to go.
Actually, you did some work in there.
We did the townhouse chimney.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
I'm in Francher. No, just the foundation now. That hasn't been approved by the board yet, but that's the plan.
Oh, it's a cool building.
They have an outhouse. I don't like that.
That's how they, that's their plumbing right now is an outhouse?
That's how they keep their meetings short.
Well, one of the things about trying to do more is that they used to swim in Lake Minihawk when they were kids. And so they're very familiar with that whole area. And I thought it would be super cool to have them work on that building. But mostly because of their expertise and know exactly how to fix the water issue that no one else was able to provide. So.
I was in a, I'm calling everybody knows, but I have, I ran a construction company for years and years and years. And these guys showed up and I said, yep, these are the guys. They made all kinds of sense. It's just how I would have done it, you know?
They may have to disassemble part of the handicap platform. For a short period of time. I don't know what's the timeline on the job.
For that particular phase, it was like two and a half days to do the exterior of the ramp wall. And we'll try to get around disassembling the ramp, but if we have to, we noticed that it was assembled in sections.
Yeah.
Right. So that if we need to, we can take out what we need and then we'll put it back. But.
Sure.
We'll try to do what we can without getting that far into the job, but.
But the whole job total would be what, a week or two?
Everything would be about two weeks. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
There's, there's one issue that I might put out here. Planning board is a lengthy process and because you have to have a ten, ten day notification, practical reading, looks like you'd be into the December meeting before you could. And then we have to. Usually an informational meeting and then you had come in January and then we, you know, approve the, the application. And then approve the project. And I can't hope for everybody, but that's, so you look like you're probably into at least December, maybe January. So you might want to think about doing this in the spring.
Okay. Yeah.
Why does it have to go to the planning board?
Because it's in the woods, in the. We call it the wetland direction. It's in the shoreline.
Shoreline.
It's a hundred and fifty feet.
I would think Bill would be on that.
Yeah, but I'm gonna ask.
Ride on that.
I'm gonna ask him tomorrow.
It's also Billy's district too.
Yes.
So.
Yeah. So we maybe, you might be able to just forget about everything I said. So we'll find that out tomorrow.
Okay.
So what would be helpful, June? Do you want us to like approve the proposal if the permits are?
Well, I think that it was, the proposal was, was approved at the previous board. But I'm waiting for a contract from them so that to be approved and signed by you folks so that they can. Even though they're not doing it right away, that it's signed and done and they can do it in phases. You know, the end phase being in the spring, but you know, perhaps now they can do some of the inside work.
Do you need a motion to spend the money to get the permit by rule?
Yes, we do. We did.
How much is that?
Two hundred and sixty six.
Actually, June, I'm letting on Tuesday so that I can come up any date other than Tuesday and just meet with you.
Oh, sure. How about Wednesday sometime? Yeah, well, that's fine. Sure.
Well, I make a motion that we allow two hundred and sixty six dollars be spent on. The permit by rule for the community center.
Second.
Vote.
So you're pre approving this?
We're pre approving it. Thank you, Carrie. So you can use the card.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm assuming that you folks will get a contract to.
I, I put one together. So it's just a matter of sending, sending it out.
Okay, it's been sent it to the select board.
Okay, what's the email?
Selectmen, selectboard, selectboard@mtburninme.org.
All right, select board as it's spelled.
Yep.
At Mount Vernon, Maine.org, ME.org.
Yeah, the M, MT in the mouth is abbreviated to MT.
MT.
And then it's main is ME.
ME, right. Okay. All right, cool.
Do you folks have any questions?
Um, not off the top of my head.
Is it straight in your mind that we have to do?
Just keep us posted on the permit and we'll try to.
Okay.
Plan a court around that.
Yeah, that'll be on my, on my side. All right, awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down.
Looking forward to it.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, John.
Oh, yeah.
So just some updates. And I'll be quick. The grant application you're working on, it's almost finished. It seems to be in by midnight on Wednesday. There's been a number of changes that happened between the beginning of the grant application and today. The poll survey is complete.
It'll, it'll stay. That's the way it wants to go.
The, the poll survey results reveal differences from what we had received from Casco Bay some years ago. And the, the end result is that there are more miles of network that need to be built and fewer poles. And the net, net result of that, based on the formula that the state uses to approve grants, is that we think. We can get a larger grant, borrow less money and have a lower increase in tax rate than has been advertised. We can get a larger grant, borrow less money and have a lower increase in tax rate than has been advertised. We'll know more about that, of course, if the ballot initiative passes and it's the grant is approved. Carrie provided audited financial statements and insurance information that we need, we thank her for that. Uh we need, uh there's a bond anticipation note commitment that I thought we'd have today, we don't. I'll track you down wherever you live, unless you're planning to go down to Rio or something.
It should be around most.
Interestingly, that bond, the initial uh. Letter was written for a municipal tax exempt bond. And since most people know that it's not a municipally owned project. We need to get a a different kind of a bond. The next item on the list here is the contract with Matrix. So again, it was another thing we were hoping to have resolved by today. Uh turns out, according to the guidelines for the application process, the memorandum of understanding that is in place. Is adequate for us to get in uh submit our application. The the application review takes about two months, they'll make their determinations at the end of the year. And we expect that because our our uh this, they have a um. A formula they use that takes, and they're trying to make an objective process, there's something like sixty applicants. We were told for maybe twenty million dollars. And uh of course, if we are not successful, for whatever reason, this time, we expect the next round would be more applicants. For less money, but be that as it may, um the um. There's a number of provisions in the agreement that has to be ironed out that we didn't know about until after the poll survey came up. And uh so we think we can uh submit the application with the M O U. We can explain to them the um the agreement and move forward. We're putting together something called a public-private partnership, and that's a relatively new animal. Under the Connect Main regime that treated dated the Main Connectivity Authority. There was more of an emphasis on municipally owned projects, the concept of a public-private partnership. Is to reduce the costs of the towns. And so what we've come up with is uh, as you know, uh Matrix Design Group's putting in two million dollars. So that the uh percentage of total project cost for the town will probably now be under twenty-five percent. And that's it, so I I run, I'm not here to ask anything, you you have any questions for me, go ahead.
What what is exactly Amanda Meter reviewing about broadband?
You want me to respond?
Yeah, it's it's just the bond, she's she's doing the bond portion of it, it's like, I think.
She's doing some financial research?
I I'm not sure what you're referring to, so I can't.
Well, there was a certain amount of money that was allocated for Amanda Meter, I don't see her on the warrant. But it's for reviewing something to do with broadband, uh do you have any supporting documents for that expense? And how it applies to the broadband?
Amanda has given us advice on how to uh draft the ballot question. In connection with uh also additional input from bond council. So that we meet the requirements that a bank would require, we go that route.
And when you say you have a bond commitment, is this something that's already been predetermined?
No.
Okay, uh what kind of a rate do you think you'd get on any kind of a bond right now?
The bank is saying four point five percent.
How can that be? Nobody else can borrow at that rate.
What?
I said, nobody else can borrow at that rate?
A bank gets special uh. Allowances because they are uh giving breaks to towns. When we used to uh have to go out for tax anticipation notes. Um we always got really fantastic, you you probably know that, we used to get really, really good uh rates. And a town just to play that game, if they needed like a hundred thousand dollars. They they would go for like two hundred thousand dollars, they put that hundred thousand extra in and and make money on it. It's it's just something that's there.
Yeah, I get it, um so that seven hundred and sixty dollars that she's billing the town. Is coming out of broadband funds from a grant already accepted, or or what?
Coming from the ARC funds.
ARC is.
Yeah, we, at Town Meeting, we we voted to move all of those funds towards broadband.
Are we allowed to see the supporting documentation for this?
Uh like, like her bill?
Yeah, well, what what services she actually provided?
You'd have to ask the copies of that.
Okay.
Put in a request.
Alright. Can I do it vertical or do I write it?
You'd have to write it.
What's the question?
Uh they wanna see uh supporting documents for the the funds requested through the ARC. They wanna see where the money is going.
So that would be in the minutes of our the meeting.
Through Carrie.
Well, it was in the orange, right, so it's.
It's always several meetings, we've spent money for several, for several months now.
What is she couched under on the warrant then? Cause I don't see any Amanda Meter on on the newspaper, it is, what's it under, is it under a business name or something? Apparently, I'm not following the alphabetical. That's why then. Already.
Uh we said on broadband.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Transfer station. I did get into, uh I could find that bill too, that I paid. We bought, I went into Tractor Supply and bought the gates, that'll go up in lieu of the uh chains. And I talked with uh Lynn Cool, who did the work on the rails. And he's gonna meet me at the transfer station sometime this week.
Great.
Let's see if we can get that worked out.
Thank you for working on that one.
As long as we didn't have to pay for a compacture.
Shout out to Megan.
It's, it was Sunday morning and I showed up and neither compacted work. And so she went up to the um shack and checked the breaker, it wasn't there. So then she come down and she got into the Gazzola thing. And she was able to get the thing going, basically she reset the thing. Luckily, she was able to do it. She did it early in the morning and got got both machines going. I probably oughta learn how to do it. Oh, I could bring this up at the same time. Um we got a letter from Waste Management, you remember this letter, where they were gonna. Okay, this is worse than what we think. Basically, that five dollar increase is for anything that gets put into that bulky waste. Container. You know how much gets put into that thing? Uh they put wood, they put the sheet rock, all this heavy stuff goes into that loose thing. Over in Belgrade, they're moving all of this stuff and putting it into their wa- waste stream, which is. Two dollars a ton versus five dollars more in the bulky string. So it starts to get very expensive if you put the the. So we put the the styrofoam in the waste. So it doesn't blow away, it should be going into the bulky waste where it's not gonna be real heavy.
But it keep it from blowing away.
I don't know, but it definitely shouldn't be going into the waste one. We've gotta rethink everything we put into that bulky waste.
So they're charging five dollar more per ton?
Then the waste.
Which is going up by two.
Yeah. Yeah.
What is, okay, it's going up by two, but what's the price difference?
The price, the price of the um the waste is going up by two, but the the um. What goes in the bulky one is going up by five dollars over that two.
So it's going up by seven. Can you say that Belgrade is moving things like sheet rock and stuff like that into the regular common waste?
Because both those containers get dumped in the same spot.
But they've got two separate charges associated.
We we are, we are charging people to dump. So what we gotta do is figure out, are we getting enough to cover that five dollar charge? So, I I should get together with um Megan to find out.
Yeah.
Because a lot of that stuff that goes in there, we're not charging them for, and it's heavy.
Well, I know she's collecting a whole lot more than they did before, so.
Sunday, we got two hundred and fifty dollars. But it basically almost half of it filled up with that two hundred and fifty, how much are we gonna spend? Plus, everything that's out in that bulky waste gets rained on or snowed on, so you got more weight, so.
How much is it a ton?
I don't have that sheet. Thirty something dollars a ton or something like that, I can't remember, thirty-two dollars a ton, I think.
So it would be now thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Or or thirty-four for that.
Thirty-seven and thirty.
Thirty-nine and thirty-four, yeah.
So I'm gonna try to get together with Penny. So see if we can do a spreadsheet and see if we can grab a hold of these totals.
Are they the same price I thought?
Well, that that's what, if, is the compact, the trash, the same price per ton right now?
Right, right, yes.
I thought one of them, there was no charge on it.
Yeah, and that's where I'm trying to get people to put tin cans into into them. If I could all buy itself and I dump it into the.
Into the metal.
Right, it's saving a little bit, but. The metal bin is the only thing that we get money back on, everything else costs us.
You know, separate it better, so the town can make money off of like the cardboard.
If we could, yeah, if we had three days up there and we had a compactor for cardboard. Cause Belgrade can refill.
If you separated the steel.
Yeah, you take steel, copper and all that.
Right.
When you take it, I used to pick it up back.
Yeah.
And I.
You're right.
Get a can tab, like I did for the Rainbow Grove, I get fifty cents a pound. Metal in it, you get five cents a pound, so if you separate all those things, the the copper and the lead and. They're all locked up, cause it's time consuming. And some would have to know, but.
And if you did that with cardboard, you'd have to have an indoor or something.
That's right.
So it.
Right.
It gets to be.
It also used to be that when, when I was more involved with transfer station. That the bulky stuff, you tried to tell people to do things like wooden stuff and that, but not anything that absorbed water. Because it makes it heavier. So that, that was kind of the. If it's gonna get mushy and heavier, it doesn't go in there.
Yeah, I see mattresses go in there, but we collect ten dollars, so that's probably a good thing. But how much more goes in there is, it, they fill it everywhere, it's amazing how many truckloads of stuff comes into that. It's just, um um my mind is just blown. Anyway, that's gonna take some work.
Maybe Megan has a couple.
Yeah, she's gonna have to. I've gotta set up a second meeting with her anyway, so.
Oh, right.
Okay. Off-road drainage. I sent a a email out to the D O T. Um they sent one back to me saying they have the materials other than the basin. And I asked them to get a extra tall one, just so there'll be more room for the sand at the bottom. And so they're working on that, I called Scott Horn. And asked him if we got all the material, if he could do it this year, and he said. Next two weeks he's busy, after that maybe, so that's information. Sorry, I don't wanna hear anything. Okay, safety procedures. We did the fire department and I thought it went pretty well. Jason has a very good handle on this kind of thing. Uh material safety data sheets, uh. Those trucks were set up nicely, um they found some things that were not labeled. Like uh bar chain oil, it's gotta have a label on it, you know.
Somebody might drink it.
The chaps uh were beyond, he should, he had to buy new chaps uh and a helmet. They have the screen on it, it was ripped. So he had a few things out there, but I thought he did pretty well. And she's, she's pretty picky, she went right through that thing. It was, it was basically a a, an inspection like a state inspection, and she did a good job, and I thought he did.
Okay, yeah.
I think he did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, um she, I think it's meeting with Jason and. Pat right now.
To do the rescue.
To do the rescue, so we'll see how that goes. And she's doing the library and town office. I think next Wednesday, yeah, next Wednesday. And I'll try to be with that, and then I I've gotta set one up for Megan to do hers.
Yeah.
Um and we haven't resolved the one with um Lee, uh that's gonna take a letter to M M A. Anything else on safety?
Just thinking back to that discussion, but I think those are the highlights.
Rachel, what are we? You're doing that next Wednesday. Doing the elections, finishing up all that stuff.
I would like to appoint Paul Crockett to the Governance Committee.
A second.
Uh vote.
What is the Governance Committee?
Uh they're looking into uh the possibility of having a town manager, former government in town. Aaron is also on it, he's nominated last meeting. Did you get sworn in?
No, I'm afraid you uh take care of it tomorrow or Thursday.
Yeah, probably not tomorrow, cause Heather will be like a little busy. Maybe Thursday would be. A calmer day.
Yeah. Um I sent out three requests for pricing to remove it. Um, I sent out three requests for pricing to remove a tree at the Spring Hills Cemetery. I've only heard back from two and I haven't gotten any prices yet.
Is it going over the?
No, it's not a, a real danger. It loses branches every year. But it is also hanging towards the cemetery.
Yeah.
Can I give you, uh, Jahia, it, uh, has a tree service and he was a whole lot less expensive than the last guy.
What's his name?
Jahia Susi, S O U C Y, Jahia.
Yeah, oh, no, he's looking at me, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did, he does a good work.
But he was half the price of the other guy.
He can give, uh, he has insurance and all that.
Yes, his, his number is six, five, three, oh, five, six, four.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanna mention Castle Island Bridge will be removed, the temporary bridge will be removed in November fourteen.
They're gonna remove it or they're gonna just?
Or close it.
It's gonna be removed.
Oh, I thought they were just gonna close it because they couldn't blow it.
No, they're gonna take it out and then start building the new one.
Oh, awesome. So we might get it before April?
No, it will be done.
By Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Memorial Day, worse than April.
Well, they're supposed to open one lane as early as April.
Oh, yeah.
But we'll see.
If you try not, go that way, do not. In the middle of winter, they fly Watson Pond Road all the way through, but do not try it if it's at all snowy because that road is pure ice with all the shaded shade trees and, and the dips. Do not use that road.
I'm coming back with a twenty-six foot Henske truck in another week. So I guess I'm not going that.
Careful. I have careful.
I would not wanna take one of those trucks across it, that's for sure. I make it that, my little truck, I was kinda scared.
There's loaded, uh, dump trucks, twelve-yard dump trucks that are going across it all the time. Yeah, but it's not snowing. No, no, but I'm just saying on the bridge, you know, but yeah. But if they're gonna increase the traffic on Watson Pond Road, the only alternative route to Belgrade, Mount Vernon is using the, uh, the, yeah, Wings Mills and.
One thirty-five about the Christine's Mills, which isn't a great road in the winter.
No, no, not at all, exactly right.
What you got?
You know what? I think you covered everything on that. I know.
It's almost nine o'clock, so we can go.
Holy moly.
Carrie, oh yeah, no, we got something over here too. Yes, oh, we gotta sign that letter.
Oh, thank you, Carrie, yes.
FEMA is requiring that, um, even though we operate the way towns operate, FEMA wants an explanation.
You didn't give us a line to sign on.
Just decide anyway.
Should I motion before you sign it?
Just like restitution.
Please, yes.
Yes.
Pulling in.
Um, I move that we accept this, um, town of Mount Vernon pay policy um, to support our FEMA documentation.
No.
Or just accept it.
Drop it like, Carrie.
Pay policy to document how we operate to FEMA. Heard of that.
Just on the second.
Second. Vote.
Thank you.
FEMA's trying to make us.
Doing that, Carrie.
Money that was spent back in two thousand seventeen.
For what?
FEMA work.
Right.
Uh, storm that was, that we had.
It was going in October twenty seventeen. I wonder if the town has done anything for being a down in the family, send them anything to help them out. Where he was, he was the fire chief for seven years. I think they ought to be, you know, if they haven't, the fire department ought to be doing something for him.
I don't know if they did or not.
I know.
Personally, I did, I did something, but.
I mean, hopefully he pulls through. It sounds like we're doing better last.
He's doing quite a bit better, but I still don't know that he's out of it.
That would be nice if they did, just a little something for him, where he was reporting, you know.
Yeah, I imagine the fire, uh, the fire company, the nonprofit part of the fire department, um, will do something.
Well, I hope they do.
But I, I'm happy to check in with them.
That would be nice if they did, where he, you know, he gave, he gave his life to the fire department.
Yeah, I sent something in, uh, but yeah, we probably should, huh? You wanna draft something up?
Yeah.
I don't know, we'll sign it.
I'm dating this first.
Yes, great idea, Karen, thank you.
This wasn't my idea.
I know, I know.
Anything else? So. This is a waste management thing, but it doesn't tell me. It doesn't tell me the, uh, tipping fees, the pulling fees and the hauling fees. This is what, um.
Six, four, ten. Eleven, twenty-four. And thirty-nine. Ninety. Okay. See. The time. Two sixty-three.
Hauling.
Forty yards.
No, zero.
Zero for that. Okay, two thirty-two eighty-eight for a fifty-yard roll-off. Zero for hauling, it says, which.
Per ton.
disposal per ton, one of the three sixty-three tons for a total of two seventy-eight thirty-one.
And so he would, uh, set up a spreadsheet for us.
So about seventy-six. Can I write this on here?
Yeah.
So about seventy-six, thirty-seven.
When are you meeting, Erin? Is it at the Larry tomorrow night?
Uh, Thursday, six-thirty.
Yes.
Someone has, someone has some connection to get the keys. How that's gonna work, I don't really know.
What's that again?
Someone from the group will be able to get keys to open up the library if it's not, and lock it. I don't, I don't know any of the people that we're going to be with, so.
I'm not sure who's on.
Spread on the governance?
No.
No. It's on the land.
Sue probably arranged us to get the key. I'm sure Sue will.
Yeah.
Do you know Sue Herman?
No.
Our time is gonna be there?
Six-thirty.
Sorry, I just missed that. Not much per ton. Doesn't really specify.
I, I wanna talk. Okay, uh, nothing else?
Carrie, I know it's been a slog.
I move that we. Seven fifty-one. Although. Get out of here.
Hey, everyone on the internet.
I'm going to try to send out those policies so we can look at it.